This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to talk, please speak into the microphones, and assistive listening devices are available. Anna, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here. Sorry, I'm having a conversation with hands.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Okay. One of the joys of my position here as mayor is the opportunity to express appreciation for different parts of our community. And today, I have the privilege of issuing a proclamation to two different organizations and groups here. First, to Sustainable Highland Park and our efforts for Earth Day, and then, secondly, in honor of the Sikh community here in Middlesex County. Is there someone from Sustainable Highland Park? Oh, there you are. Would you join me up here? And Council President Phil George, would you join me as liaison?
Whereas plastic waste can be found everywhere, land and sea, even in the most remote places on the planet, affecting the humans and animals; and whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges, among them, the need to manage an increased amount of waste, to which plastics will contribute roughly 12,000 million metric tons by 2050; and whereas approximately only 10% of plastic waste is recycled; and whereas, as people of this earth, from all walks of life, have a right to a healthy environment, and plastic pollution has been associated with several health issues affecting the general population; and whereas children, the youth, and the most vulnerable are disproportionately affected by plastic pollution; and whereas it is more important than ever to cooperate to find solutions for the plastic waste that is concentrated in several enormous patches in the ocean and that threatens the human food chain; and whereas it is essential to involve the community in the design and implementation of solutions for pressing environmental issues such as plastic pollution; and whereas ending plastic pollution is crucial to the survival of this planet and its inhabitants; and whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship, commitments, and sustainable efforts, now therefore I, Gail Brill-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22nd, 2018, as Earth Day throughout Highland Park, and encourage all of its inhabitants, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote the well-being of the inhabitants of the Borough of Highland Park and the protection of their environment, especially in the reduction of plastic waste on this day and all days going forward. And I want to thank Sustainable Highland Park, and you in particular, Tina, for all your efforts on our plastic bag program. You've done wonderful work with Stop &amp; Shop. And in case you don't know, if you go shopping there and you bring your own bag or ask for it without a bag, you can enter into a drawing for $25 towards your next shopping spree at Stop &amp; Shop. And I think there are approximately 600 entries a week. So again, I want to thank you and your organization for everything you're doing, and I hope I see you all at Earth Day on the 22nd. Great. Thank you. Let me just say that if you go, the next time you pass Stop &amp; Shop, going to the parking lot, you will see a very, very large sign on the brick face of Stop &amp; Shop that reminds you permanently now, not just through a lawn sign, but permanently to bring your reusable bags. Do not leave them in your car. Do not leave them in your closet. Bring them and use them, and we will contribute to the reduction of plastic waste, low waste. And everybody, please come down to the Environmental Center, 1123, this Sunday for Earth Day. Thank you.
And now, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Kim Cho Han to join me, and members of the Sikh community, if you would join me up at the microphone. So some of you may know, everybody here? Okay, so some of you may know that Middlesex County's motto is that we're the greatest county in the land, and part of what makes our community, our county, so wonderful is the diversity of our residents and their commitment to participating in making our communities a better place. And on behalf of the council of Highland Park, the citizens of Highland Park, I'd like to read you a proclamation. And it's very small print, so.
Whereas Highland Park is enriched by the diversity of its residents, who have cultivated a climate of social tolerance and intellectual pluralism that has sustained the state throughout our history; and whereas the Sikh community, which originated in Punjab, India, and began immigrating into the United States over 100 years ago, has played an important role in ongoing, in developing this country and this county and this state; and whereas Sikhism is the world's fifth-largest religion, with nearly 30 billion adherents, including roughly 500,000 in the United States; and whereas founded by Guru Nanak. Thank you. In the 15th century, the Sikh monotheistic tradition teaches its adherents to practice the universal principles of truthful living, service to humanity, and devotion to God; and whereas believing that every human being, regardless of race, gender, or creed, is equal in the eyes of God, Sikhism emerged as a pioneer in social justice and female participation in religious ceremonies, widely encouraged and interfaith efforts to fight oppression regularly pursued; and whereas the religion's emphasis on loving service to humanity also inspires Sikhs in New Jersey, Middlesex County, and Highland Park to make lasting social contributions, such as providing free food for the less fortunate around the state and food drives; and whereas despite the progressive principles and charitable deeds, the American Sikh community commonly experiences discrimination, often by individuals who are unaware of the beliefs and practices of the faith; and whereas nearly 60% of Americans admit to knowing nothing about the religion or its practitioners, and national rates of anti-Sikh bigotry rose dramatically during the September 11 terrorist attacks; and whereas Sikhs disproportionately experience school bullying, with estimates indicating that over 50% of all Sikh children, and roughly 67% of turbaned Sikh children, endure physical or verbal abuse while at school; and whereas New Jersey is no stranger to this abuse, as a Sikh student's turban was set on fire by a vengated classmate of Hightstown High School in 2006; and whereas deadly assaults against the Sikh community, such as the hate-inspired murder of Sikh worshippers at the Sikh berdwarah of Wisconsin in August 2012, have also become all too common occurrences across the country; and whereas although the Sikh-American community continues to peacefully overcome each attack on its cultural identity, the Borough of Highland Park is now compelled to promote public awareness of the Sikh faith and then memorialize the lasting contributions of the Sikh residents. And whereas because Vaisakhi, an annual festival that is held in April to commemorate the creation of Kalsa Panta. Creation of Kalsa Panta, a fellowship of devout Sikhs, is one of the most important Sikh holidays. It is altogether fitting and proper for New Jersey to designate the month of April as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in order to celebrate its Sikh community and combat anti-Sikh bigotry. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Borough of Highland Park hereby designates the month of April every year as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. In the Borough of Highland Park, in order to promote public awareness of the Sikh faith, recognize the important contributions of the Sikh community in combat anti-Sikh bigotry. Thank you. Similar honor was bestowed upon the Sikh community by the state legislature.
On behalf of also the award and with another candidate, these are the two groups located in Middlesex County. And on behalf of all the Sikhs, we feel honored to be given a chance to be present here, and I want to thank all the council persons, councilwomen, councilmen, and all the attendees here, for being honored to be here. As a note of thanks, I would like to say that very little is known about our faith, very little. Our faith is known as Sikh. It's an Indian word, S-I-K-H, in English, it is known as the disciple of the Lord. One of the things, our religion is over about 500 years back, or relegated in India, now in port, and then it was ruled by the British. The Sikh religion has a lot of commonalities, with the duties of spirituality. I happen to be educated in the Christian school in England, so I understand both of these pretty well. It's based on one of the phrases in the morning, because God is love, which is in the Bible also. We do pay, we have a distinct identity. Even though we have settled over 197 countries in the world, six, we represent only 1% of the population in India, but we contribute almost 23% of the GDP in India. Do we face discrimination? Yes, very much in India, but we take it in a positive way. When we walk, if there's a, like a kite flies against the wind always, the blade takes off against the wind. We do face discrimination here and there, but we don't take it in a hard, we take it in a positive way. We claim that we walk very hard, like Jewish and Israel, we also feel discrimination, but we, society of India, the Hinduism. We have distinct identity in the sense we grow up here, we don't cut out here at all, products close to. So we bear eternal as a mark of respect to the Lord. Our children, they wear swastika, vandana, bhakta. Somehow after 2011, 9/11, people missed us as a different identity or with another religion, or originated at least. But we pay heavy price, a lot of people got Sikhs got killed because they thought we were a different religion. We live in our love. We have a community hidden, we distribute our one tenth of our earning, doesn't matter, we earn $10 a day or we make a million dollars a month. We are supposed to contribute 10% of our earning, not only financially, but also by the time. We pray, we are supposed to spend $200, $300 every day. So what we fund, 10%, we contribute to the society we live in, whether they live in England or USA or Canada. Discrimination is a part of life, particularly when you look different. So that's all I have to say, but I do feel very honored that to be given a chance to come here and for the foundation, I'm very, very thankful to everybody.
Stephanie here. She's done a lot for us.
Middlesex County. Today we are here and we want to thank.
And we have a proclamation for you to make in each of your temples with that in Middlesex County, and you will let them know that has a part.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks to everyone.
Can you give it possible to picture?
Yes, sure. Do you want the council behind us too? So.
Oh, you should stand here.
Yeah, you can get back because it's too crowded.
All right, it's time for our council reports, and I think I'll switch it up a little bit today and start on my right with Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor. The Historic Commission will be hosting a walk-in tour. Save the dates, Wednesday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, June 3rd at 10:00 AM. More details to come. We will have a sign-up sheet online. The link just hasn't went live yet. The Arts Commission, we had a full house, 50 to 60 people at the Fluxus Art Panel, very successful. A small turnout for the Book Arts Workshop, but it was very successful nevertheless. Coming up, we have a comic book workshop, Open Studios, in collaboration with our own HP TV, interviewing local artists. The Highland Park Arts Collective, the artist group in town, will have a table at the Earth Day Celebration, celebrating prints of their posters with the town's artist designed especially for this year's Earth Day theme of water incorporation with Sustainable Highland Park. The full-sized posters will be on display at the Environmental Center on the day of the celebration. Proceeds will be used to further arts projects at the Environmental Center, the Meadows Trail, and downtown art walks. Also, the collective is once again sponsoring the Buck Art Show in May. Pieces from the 2014 show and some for this year's show were displayed at the Park Partners this year. And also, they have been offered in the past years, and a chance for all ages to submit an art piece made from no more than $10 worth of stuff bought at the Dollar Store right here in our downtown. Applications will be on the table at the Earth Day Celebration. As it relates to senior services, on Thursday, April 19th, the Highland Park High School National Honor Society will be at the Senior Center for a special visit. Join them to play board games, read stories, or get your nails painted. We still have a few seats available for our upcoming Atlantic City trip that will take place on Tuesday, April 24th. The cost is only $35, and you receive back $25 back in slot play upon your arrival at AC. This trip is open to all, and please contact the center for more details. Please ensure to sign up for the Middlesex County's 90th Birthday Bash on Wednesday, May 9th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, if you haven't already done so. Any resident 90 years old or above is invited to attend this celebration luncheon and may bring a guest. And please contact the center to register or for more details. Transportation will also be provided. And save the dates, our next senior luncheon will be held on Tuesday, May 22nd at 12:00 noon, and our annual senior prom event will be held Tuesday, June 19th, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Our rec services, the Highland Park Summer Camps, the Day Camp, Sports Camp, and Theater Camp, we're still registering for, we still have open registry. The camp runs from July 5th to August 17th, and summer camp jobs are posted on the employment section of the Borough's website. Please apply by May 5th. The Willy Wonka Junior will be performed by the Highland Park Youth Theater Company on Thursday, May 3rd, and Sunday, May 6th, in the high school auditorium. Our annual Independence Day fireworks event will be held on Monday, July 2nd, and the same date is scheduled for Tuesday, July 3rd. And that is it for my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. On tonight's agenda, we're introducing an amendment to our amusement and entertainment ordinance. In the oldy days, we limited business floor space and hours of operation for a type of business called amusement and entertainment, and that was probably due to old truancy issues. Now, however, arcades and escape rooms are some of the most popular types of entertainment for kids, families, adults, young and old. We would welcome this type of business in Highland Park and expect this change to allow businesses whose primary offer is amusement and entertainment to open it in Highland Park without seeking a variance, and to remain open until midnight while following local noise ordinances. Last August, we passed an abandoned and vacant property ordinance. We immediately identified 22 properties which were abandoned and added three more. This is a revolving list, so as things come off, other properties that we notice that are abandoned go on the registry. We notified the properties that we originally identified of this new list that we're keeping. The first year, they pay $500 for the privilege of being on the list, and the second year, they pay $1,000 to be listed. Eleven registered for the list immediately. Once registered, our code enforcement director further evaluated the properties for items needing repairs. Of the total lists, half have been sold. Several are under renovations for resale. This is improving home values for all of our residents. This is throughout our town that we're finding these abandoned properties. They're not located in just one neighborhood. I'd like to take this moment to thank our co-director, Scott Brescher, for taking this initiative and for just improving all of our home sale, for our house values, and making our streets and residential neighborhoods look better and safer. Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, in conjunction with our Public Safety Committee, is hosting another pop-up bike lane. Join us this Sunday, April 22nd, on Earth Day, and help us test out our temporary contra bike lane on Walter Avenue. We expect the bike lane to help with the day's traffic and provide traffic calming for Walter Avenue. Thanks to Kelsey Ralph of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee and her grad students at Rutgers for taking the lead on this. Special thanks to Lieutenant Pennacella, who's helped us greatly with putting this together, and please visit our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee table at Earth Day. Sunday, May 6th is probably one of the biggest days in Highland Park. In the morning, it's our 10th annual Runs in the Park 5K, followed by a Kids Run. We've had special T-shirts, new logos, and prizes designed to celebrate our 10th year. Online registration and sponsorships are still available. If you haven't already signed up, please do so at runinthepark.org. Just a reminder, the 5K is an inclusive event. It's open to walkers, persons with disabilities, and all wheels. If you have a scooter, if you have a skateboard, if you have rollerblades, please come join us, moms with strollers too. Later in the day, join us at our annual street fair. It's one of our biggest events, we have tons of vendors, and it's just a huge party in town. Shop and eat local, and check out Highland Park's newest restaurant, Okey Poki. It's Okey Poki Cafe at 55 Raritan Avenue. They serve the popular Poki Bowls. I can't wait to try it. And lastly, I just want to comment, I think some other people on this panel are going to mention this, we had a terrible tragedy in town yesterday, and I just want to thank our schools and our residents and neighbors for showing the kind of compassion and empathy and support that's needed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. And, Councilwoman Wolkowitz, I just wanted to piggyback on the, because I, because, no, 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 that I was excited to sign up for the 5K, and I can't speak for a council, but I challenge anybody to come out and beat us, because we're very fast.
The gauntlet.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I see, and I know some members of the audience have seen my challenge and noted, noted. It's all in good fun. I don't think I'm gonna win. I'm not a runner.
But your son will.
Maybe, maybe, yeah. Thank you to all who came out on a rainy, cold night to attend our roundtable on gun violence on Sunday at the Highland Park Middle School, and to our panelists who participated. The event proved to be a multi-dimensional look at an urgent and complex policy issue. Thank you to Mayor Brill-Mittler, Congressman Frank Pallone, Senator Prag Dagnan, Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin, Freeholder Santinara, Bruce Morgan of the New Brunswick NAACP, Kim Bevallack Crane of the Highland Park Public Schools, Avery Haley Locke, a student at Highland Ha- at Highland Park High School, local psychologist Jeffrey Axelbank, and Karen Cantor of the Brady Campaign and Million Moms March for participating. I think anybody who attended it, and, um, uh, it will be broadcast on HPTV and available on YouTube as well. Thank you Gary Leslie of Highland Park Television for recording. Uh, you'll see that, you know, it's- it's- it- this is a complex issue that crosses a lot of silos in the policy arena. And to have an honest discussion about this issue rather than the dogma that you might hear, um, on the news, I think, um, does a great service to, uh, to- to addressing a very real pressing issue that affects, um, um, so many communities, uh, everywhere. So it was a- it was a great discussion. Just related, I attended a, um, a panel discussion last week at the Rutgers School of Social Work. That included Karen Cantor of- of, uh, the Brady Campaign and featured former Governor Jim Florio, who shepherded what's still considered the most aggressive gun safety legislation way back in 1990. So it just goes to show that, you know, it's been almost 30 years since New Jersey passed its landmark, um, uh, gun safety legislation. And, uh, obviously, we're very much due for- for- for, uh, another aggressive look at, uh, to- to- to address these issues. The Human Relations Commission will hold its monthly meeting tomorrow, April 18th, 7:00 p.m. in the lower level conference room, uh, here at Borough Hall. Please come. And thank you to the Human Relations Commission for hosting Peper Jean Artist Extraordinaire, the book talk for children at the library last Sunday, April 15th. The stormy cold weather didn't prevent some committed residents from coming out to enjoy this event. And thanks to Human Relations Commissioner Julie Locke, uh, for organizing the, um, for organizing the book club, which provides a fantastic opportunity for residents to come together to discuss literary themes that mirror cultural diversity in Highland Park as well as the myriad socioeconomic issues that arise. Julie's here, uh, it's just, it's been a great, I mean, the- the, you've done a great job, um, bringing, uh, so many different looks and- and- and cultures and experiences to- 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 to the book club, and it's provided really valuable discussions, so thank you. Last Wednesday, the Highland Park Board of Health passed a resolution calling on the Highland Park Board of Education to reinstate the Teen Pep Program. And as part of that program, provide regular access to condoms at the Highland Park High School. Teen Pep was previously successfully delivered in Highland Park High School by trained peer educators under faculty sponsorship through the end of the 2014 school year. Um, Teen Pep stands for Teen Prevention Education, and it's a program that's evidence-based, comprehensive sexual health program that utilizes peer-to-peer education and is demonstrated to increase students' knowledge, attitudes, skills, and behaviors associated with healthy decision-making. Uh, anybody can learn more at www teenpep.org. Uh, a little bit on this, the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education require all students to learn about human relationships and sexuality and must be included in the district's health education curriculum. And improving the comprehensive sex education program, we think, would decrease that likelihood of adolescents engaging in risky sexual behavior and providing access to condoms would increase their use by adolescents. We've received assurances from the district administration that it is planning to a full rewrite of the K-12 health and sex education curriculum and to bring back the Teen Pep Program. So there we go. I've seen this program in action in other districts and it's a phenomenal program. Also, last Wednesday, I attended a community meeting hosted by the Middlesex Chapter of the- of ACLU People Power that focused on race, racial bias, and profiling that exist in our communities. It was a frank and honest discussion about race, something that eludes us too often. I look forward to a renewed discussion in our community where we can talk about racial identity- your identity and the policy imbalance thereof and take meaningful steps to change ourselves and our institutions. Uh, related, the mayor will talk more about the first Committee of Understanding meeting that, uh, we hosted last Thursday. The Highland Park Board of Health and the Highland Park Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs will both have tables at the Highland Park, uh, Spring Street Fair on Saturday, May 6th. Stop by and learn more about the important work these commissions are doing. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, do you want to go next? Do you want me to come back to you, Phil?
We have Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
No, I know. Do you want to go with them first before you?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
I'm supposed to be Councilwoman Fine, but I'll go. Thank you. Tonight, um, my report is gonna be a very somber one, as, um, many of you have heard that there was a baby that was lost and a teenager here in Highland Park that, um, is currently in the hospital. And she disposed of her baby, um, someplace in Highland Park on the street. And, um, with that, I would just like to have the community of Highland Park to come together, um, and to be supportive at this time for this young lady as she's going through this trauma, and also her family, and to also mourn the loss of the baby. And I want to put a, uh, reminder out to anyone that has a baby, a newborn, that for whatever reason they are- that's unwanted, or they don't want at the time, that the hospital emergency rooms will take the babies, the police station, the fire station, our first aid squad, any ambulance squad, um, will take the baby. So please, if you are in a situation where you have a child and you really don't want that baby, please turn it over to any of these entities. And with that, um, I would just like to have a moment of silence for the loss of that infant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
I do not have a report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Council President, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a note on the, uh, the Veterans Administration noted that there had been revisions to the Transition Assistance Program, the TAP Program, which is an inter-agency initiative, uh, which was originally started as a volunteer group in 1991 under the National Defense Authorization Act, but is mandatory now as of the Higher Heroes Act of 2011. Uh, the updates are on the Veteran, uh, Department of Veterans Affairs website. This program has been revitalized to allow transition veterans and their families who are returning, uh, to integrate back into normal life. I'm proud to say that my oldest son, Justin, uh, a Marine and now in the Marine National Guard, um, has implemented this program at his workplace at a pharmaceutical company in North Jersey. Um, we'll hear more, I hope, from the, um, Borough Administrator with regard to the PSENG solar field update. I know that everyone's tired of hearing the updates that nothing has happened and nothing is going anywhere. There was a meeting attended by high-ranking, uh, representatives from the DEP. Uh, Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin, uh, was- was present, uh, a number of, uh, other dignitaries, a number of work, uh, people working on the prog- program. And the, looks like the backlog, we hope, is going to be broken. Uh, the- the DEP's requirements are being scaled down, uh, from the massive cleanup of basically half of Highland Park, uh, now to the site itself have been, uh, downscaled. Uh, the borough's going out with its proposals for the cleanup of the actual pad site itself. Um, and, uh, I would just like to thank, uh, the mayor and the administrator for putting that together along with Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin. Uh, the governor actually sent in his support for the project, uh, as part of his green initiative, uh, supporting our own Highland Park. The Department of Public Works has been engaged in tree removal since that heavyweight storm in March which brought down so many of our trees and- and branches as well. Um, the pro- hopefully, uh, it will get done soon. It is taking up a lot of time, so I ask that some other, uh, projects, uh, we exercise a little bit of patience because, uh, there is a lot of work involved in that removal, which was unanticipated. Leaf, but at the same time, leaf pickup for the spring cleanup is still ongoing. Uh, and the bulk trash pickups, uh, for our- our three districts were completed in the last two weeks, um, uh, with what appears to be some record pickups on the south side. Uh, on tonight's- tonight's agenda, we have a resolution for, uh, going out to purchase the street tree replacements for the 2018 program. Uh, this is a coordinated project between the DPW and Shade Tree Advisory Committee and our arborist. Uh, the DPW and the Shade Tree Advisory are coordinating, uh, with a program that not many people have probably heard about, but which actually has quite an impact, uh, for the removal of the Emerald Ash Bore insect pest, which has been migrating from the south over the last 20 years, has struck New Jersey. And the only, uh, program for curing it is unfortunately a removal of the ash trees before it reaches a critical point. Uh, the trees, uh, 99.9% of which die, uh, and then present a public health risk, uh, as the, uh, trees tend to fall. Uh, the STACK, uh, has a map which they've done on- under terms of a grant, which maps out all of the street trees in the borough of Highland Park. Uh, and they are, uh, using that map to identify the actual trees that have to be removed. Um, an interesting, um, by-play turned out, the, uh, trails, the Meadows Trail Volunteer Group has to finish compliance with this phase of the National Trails Grant by September 1st. And a lot of that requires trail markings and placing wood chips for pedestrian passage on the trail. Well, it turns out that we can use our ash trees because one of the recommendations of both the state and county, uh, is that we, uh, grind them into wood chips. They originally said you had to bring these giant machines on site. They grind them and then you truck them away, uh, at a high expense to disposal sites. Um, the proposal now is to actually grind and chip them on site, and we may actually be able to work with, uh, Middlesex County Parks Department, which has to remove from, uh, Donaldson Park. We are obviously located immediately adjacent to Donaldson Park, so Mr. Fine may well be get, uh, getting a shared service agreement, uh, for wood chipping at the site. Uh, DEP is also, uh, exploring a possible shared services arrangement, uh, with Edison for, uh, DPW for maintenance, uh, and we will hopefully have more on that. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week for the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. The rescheduled Environmental Commission meeting was held the same night. They had missed their March meeting because another one of our spring snowstorms. Um, so, um, the- a- again, as I said, STACK is assisting DPW with the Emerald Ash Bore Program. Um, in addition, as I said, we do have the t- a tree replacement stock resolution on tonight. With regard to the Environmental Commission, um, and the, um, and the Meadows Volunteers, they got the assistance of a third group, uh, that works very closely with Highland Park. The Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership did a workday with about 70 members over the weekend. They removed, uh, I don't know if anybody saw it, at the foot of Valentine where the DPW is, a large pile of trash. That was all removed by the volunteers, including tires, mattresses, just general debris was removed from the meadows and from the waterfront. Um, and really, uh, the entire stretch of the waterfront in Highland Park in the- in the Meadows area. Uh, quite a, a large thank you to them for doing that. Um, the Meadows Trail Volunteers held their strategic planning along with some delegates from the Environmental Commission on Sunday, uh, morning, this past Sunday morning, uh, which I attended. Uh, and they have, um, uh, both their cleanup plans and their grant, uh, plans for, uh, compliance with the National Trails Grant by September 1st, but also, uh, two- and five-year, uh, lookout plans for development of the meadows, consistent with the state's pr- uh, increasing interest on the Raritan as a riparian recreational front. Sustainable Highland Park, the meet- the next meeting is Wednesday, the 25th. More importantly, um, and I encourage everyone, the, um, Earth Day Celebration has been growing year to year. This year, uh, there'll be food again, entertainment again. Um, even the Highland Park Arts Collective has a table and they were asked to cooperate by designing the posters to, uh, on the theme of water, which is the theme for this year. Uh, there are even- we even had a presentation, uh, of, um, some grade school students with a project on micro particles, uh, who will be sitting at part of the table. So it is now encompassing all ages and- and- and, uh, all persons. Uh, and I encourage everyone to, uh, to show up and I'll see you then. That's my report.
Thank you. Uh, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
And Borough Administrator?
Uh, just to continue briefly on the Earth Day theme, I think, uh, Councilman George covered the solar field update. It's feeling as optimistic that I've had in a long time that that project's gonna move forward, so you'll hopefully hearing more soon. Um, but we also had our, um, I've mentioned before, local government energy audit. Well, the auditors came and went through all of our buildings. I believe it was last week, or yes, it was last week. And we'll be getting a report back on where we can find some energy savings. Um, and so hopefully, those will be the projects of the future you'll be hearing about soon. So anyway, I hope you'll see you on Earth Day on Sunday.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of things on my list here. Um, no one's mentioned the Teen Center, Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Because there's some updates I had for everyone inside that we're gonna do next.
Okay. Okay, so the Teen Center, um, this has been, uh, something in the Councilwoman's eye for at least eight years now or more. And, um, frankly, it's something I think our, uh, young residents desperately need a place of their own. As you may or may not recall, uh, our Senior Center, it was originally constructed as a senior youth center, um, but the seniors have pretty much kicked the youth out of the building for most of the hours of operation. Um, and now finally, um, I think the delivery date, Borough Administrator, is when?
About, uh, May, mid-May?
Uh, we should be completed next month.
Okay.
So, um, we're-
Yeah. It's very exciting.
A lot of exciting stuff.
It's very exciting. Um, so, uh, Councilman Hirsch mentioned the, uh, gun safety panel that we had last night. It was a very good discussion. Um, we had, um, members of, um, our legislature, we had Congressman Pallone. Uh, I won't go through everyone because Matt already mentioned everybody. But to hear from our students and our teachers talking about gun violence and how it impacts them and what they hope to see was really enlightening and thought-provoking. And, um, I want to thank all of the panelists who participated in the program and all of the people who came out to hear the discussion. As Matt said, um, HPTV will be featuring, he was there, Gary was there last night, um, filming on Sunday night. And, uh, you will be able to see the entire panel discussion on HPTV, and I think it's worth watching. This week, I am having my first meeting with my new mayor's teen advisory council. Um, from our high school, uh, we have about six or seven students who, um, sent in their applications to be members of my council. Um, they, what I hope that the teens will be able to do is, um, find a place where they can express their needs from us here in, uh, Highland Park and work with us, um, towards, um, making this a better community, not only, uh, for them, but for all members of Highland Park. Um, so I'm really excited about that upcoming meeting. And then, um, I just a couple of words on the Committee of Understanding. Uh, we met last, um, Thursday, I think it was. And, um, you know, I want, there was a very good group of people who sat together. My goal was to open up conversation so we can start hearing each other. I want to thank all the residents who came out to participate in that meeting. Uh, and I want to thank the police that came to the meeting, um, to hear what others had to say. Um, we will be continually looking at our practices here in Highland Park. Um, and hopefully, um, when we- when the whole group feels it's time that we can come back together and talk again, we'll have other meetings moving forward. Okay, at this point, um, I can open up our discussion for public discussion. This portion of public discussion, there are two me- two sent sessions of public discussion. This is the first one, and it is a, uh, 15 minutes allocated to public discussion. There is a second public discussion session that is held later on, on the agenda. So, um, I would ask you to, when you come up, um, ask your questions, speak into the microphone, and then in 15 minutes, we'll have to cut it, go back to regular business, and then come back if you haven't had- yet had a chance to speak. So, um, if anyone has anything they want to say, um, please line up by the microphone.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Herb Rose, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. The community of Hope Incorporated, and the Pescataway School, National School, and Technical School, and the Veterans of 370, extended, veterans of foreign wars, extended an invitation to all of the veterans, men and a woman- extended an invitation to all of the veterans, men and the women who have served our country, to please attend on April the nineteenth, which is this Thursday, April the nineteenth, at ten a.m. till two p.m., to please attend the very important function, Middlesex County Stand Down, which will be held at the Middlesex Vocational and Technical School at twenty-one Southern Lane in Pescataway. Again, this invitation is open to all the men and the women, the veterans who have served our country, please come and bring your families, and to the men of the National Guard, the United States Air Force, the Naval Reserve, Marine Corps Reserve, please come and bring your families. This is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. You can move that down if you need to.
I was just going to say, there's a little bit of a high disparity there. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Can you?
Jackie Zinberg.
Okay.
I am. See, my children are grown, so I don't shout anymore. My name's Jackie Zinberg. I'm the two thirty-nine, South Sixth Avenue. I just wanted to first address a couple of things. There used to be a program which talked about young women usually who are not able to care for their children. They would probably want to, but they cannot, and it was called No Shame, No Blame, No Name. And I wonder if this young girl might have hurt the baby had she known that there wasn't going to be any shame or blame and that she couldn't remain anonymous. The second thing I wanted to tell you is unfortunately, the limits are finite, they don't stretch. We welcome our children at the senior center, and anyone who has any doubt, it means only to walk around and see the smiles on the seniors' faces. I'm also glad that they did build a teen center. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Don't hang out on the corner just to see. No, I won't.
Thank you.
Anyway, the other thing I wanted to tell you is that I'm not vision disparity, no vision problem, and what my doctor said to me was, I need the prison glasses, and they're not advanced enough yet. So, this, and I don't drive, and most of the people in my building don't drive, we walk. I was on Second Avenue and Magnolia this afternoon, and there's no way I would cross that street in any direction. It looks like it was targeted back to the delays. I can't even step off the curb, okay? And I'm asking you to please make a concerted effort to address that street, the corner where Right Eight is. That corner is five different heights, I looked at it, and I've gotten to. Please, whatever you can do. I'm amazed at how many things you do address. I'm asking you to also direct attention to this.
Yes, I saw the Borough Administrator making a note on the locations, she'll get to that.
Sure, Superintendent Rich was writing it down too.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just, just something. Thank you for bringing up the No Shame, No Blame Program. That program is still in existence by the state of New Jersey, and there is a free number that anyone can call. That number is eight seven seven, eight three nine, two three, three nine. So, it's the No Shame, No Blame Program. It's still very much in effect. You can call anonymously, and the number again is eight seven seven, eight three nine, two three, three nine. And as it pertains to our teen center, one of our goals is that we'll be providing services for mothers. So, hopefully we'll have something incorporated into that center that will address the needs of teen mothers or young mothers as we move forward with our plans.
Thank you.
Test.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I, can I just add to that? I believe if you look up Safe Haven, it's also online.
It's on the Safe Haven.
So, there's more information online if you don't want to call. Thanks.
Exactly, and that's what, exactly, anonymous.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Andrew Schwartz, fourteen twelve Central Avenue. I've never done it before, so bear with me.
You could raise it or take it off.
My name is Andrew Schwartz, fourteen twelve Central Avenue. I'm the Vice President of the Volunteer Fire Department in Highland Park. I'd like to thank my fellow firefighters and council for listening, Mayor. I'm going to read a couple notes there, so please bear with me. As firefighters, we give our time and energy, and mostly our safety, to do what we do. We are willing to do whatever it takes, which can include running into burning buildings, going to car crashes, and saving anybody who possibly could need it. But we noticed that the budget proposed and shown on the agenda is significantly lower than the fire department discussed. This lowered budget can make it extremely difficult for us to do our job. The majority of our budget is for training and equipment. We are tremendously lacking in many areas of equipment, including many items expiring and needing to be replaced. We know you have our best interests at heart and considering what we are willing to sacrifice, and look forward to working with you and make sure that all of our training and equipment needs are met so we can have a smooth and able fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, hello.
Just state your name and address, please.
My name's LJ Smith. I lived in this town for twenty-four years, but I live in East Brunswick right now, so I appreciate you allowing me to come up here and speak. I just want to say, whatever I'm saying is coming from a place of love, and it's not to point the finger at anyone in particular. I just have a lot of questions, a lot of questions that people in the community want answers to. I still have cousins, and I have a niece who goes to school in this township, so, you know, I'm coming from, I'm coming from a sports culture, sports community. I played in my high school football here for Joe Pala Castro, played at Rutgers, and worked hard enough to play in the NFL for seven years. And along those lines, along my time, I got to figure out what it takes to be a winner and what it takes to win. And, and I know that Highland Park is a small town, and I know as far as competing, we've gone through a lot of highs and lows since I graduated in nineteen ninety-eight. There's a lot of communities constantly changing, different people coming in, may not care about football too much, and I understand that. I understand football's got a lot of backlash and a lot of negative press due to the concussion stuff, but without football, we wouldn't be here, and you wouldn't be willing to hear whatever I have to say right now. But my concern is, is Highland Park trying to win? Are we doing enough as far as giving our kids a platform in a sports arena to compete and win? In two thousand and five, I think it was six, I gave four thousand dollars to help pay for the uniforms in Highland Park. That was almost eleven, twelve years ago, they got the same uniforms. And you can't, these kids know, they may not be able to say what they feel and articulate it, but you can't BS them. And they can feel when people are buying or putting stock into them. When I come, the track, the track has been there for over thirty years, same condition, it's deteriorating. The field's like a community playground. I go there, it's garbage. What I'm trying to say is, it just, I feel like the pride is kind of not what it used to be. And even though I'm making a new mayor, you know, I'm going to talk to the community also, there's nothing like sports to bring a community together, it doesn't have to be football. But these kids, they're yearning for a little bit more, I think, participation and commitment from the community. And as a person who doesn't live in Highland Park anymore, when I come through and I see certain things, it's objective, you know? I'm not, I have no, I have no stakeness, you know, and politically, I'm just talking to you out of love. I've recently hooked up with Mr. John Helm here, and he's trying to do the best that he can with Open Gym Wednesday nights, and I think, I don't know, he may get an hour, I don't know, but I know he's hustling, I know he's fighting just for that hour. I know we just got a teen center coming, but these kids also need to be out of the house. They need to associate with other kids from North Side and South Side. They need to come together. So, when these kids become seniors, they have a continuity that can carry over to wins. And now, we got community coming to games on Friday nights. Friday night was like a get-together when I was coming up. You know, there's a lot of things going on in the football program, we're going to talk about that, but it used to be a community thing, and I just ask that, I know there's a lot of things that go on, I can see there's a lot of things going on with the community. We may not have the same amount of talent, but you still got to put, you still have to put the time in. The last two years, I've been doing, I've been going up to Cedar Grove, a small town like Highland Park, we have a better community. We have more, we have, Highland Park's a microcosm of the world, not just America, but of the world. So, we, and we have a lot more to pull from, is what I'm trying to say, as far as talent goes. We can be good at soccer, we can be good at baseball, we can be good at a lot of things. And I think that sports will help bring this community together a little bit, so, I mean, we have a lot of new play guys, but if you can kind of, you know, put that on the list of things that you might want to focus on, I know the kids would appreciate it, me and Mr. Helm, I'm going to do whatever we have to do, because, like I said, it's coming from a place of love. Thank you.
Thank you, LJ. I know you and I had a chance to meet about a month or two ago when we were talking about the Teen Center. As you may or may not know, the Board of Ed and the schools are separate from what we're, what we do. So, my suggestion in terms of the schools is, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but you speak really well to the issue because you lived it, and I'm just suggesting that perhaps you might want to go to a Board of Ed meeting to talk with them about an emphasis on sports in the school and uniforms and that sort of thing. But for us, what I hope is, once we have this Teen Center up and running, that people like you, as we talked before, and John, will come out and help us find ways to get these kids engaged together in sports and other things. I know Councilwoman Foster Dublin can speak to that as well. If it's an issue with the rec department, John, in terms of having to fight for an hour, then that's something, you know, maybe Stephanie, you can talk with them about. Stephanie is our liaison to the, to, okay.
He knows we've been speaking. I've been outside of this budget, has been asking folks for funds for him.
Well, you know, there are a lot of us in town who make donations quietly, and, you know, if you don't mind letting me or some of the council members know of what your needs are, we can help you out. You know, that's part of what we do. We also have something called HP Gives a Hoot, which, as you know, was started to help feed kids when school was not in session, and the fund has been, you know, growing, and they are reaching out in different areas. There's a new teen mentorship program that the Hoot organization is funding at the high school, and if there's a need for things that would help our teens, you know, I would suggest that, you know, you guys think of what you need, and I'll be happy to set you up with the Hoot Committee to see what they can do to help you out as well. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know you were, I know you were kind of giving an all-encompassing assessment, but I've had, as I coach my son's travel soccer team, so I get to see the good and the bad all around New Jersey, and I get to, you know, as just an observant person, I have to compare our facilities with other towns for good or for not. Have you seen, just specifically related to our fields and our facilities, have you, you mentioned the high school track, which I think is newer than thirty years old, but is, has, the field has some major issues, I know, because we practiced there too. Do you have any, I guess I'm just wondering what your assessment is of our other fields that are in Donaldson or, you know, just some of our other active recreation fields? I'd love to know what your thoughts are there. I think it might be helpful for us to kind of have an ongoing conversation about that, because I have my opinions, but it's not really my area, so I can't.
Yeah, and that's also a county issue, but if...
It is, it is, right, and it's complicated too, because a lot of our active recreation is county land, but is something that I think could be something that we may want to be more aggressive about.
So, maybe you want to talk afterwards, you know, if you guys have any input.
I'm just coach on that one, that's Stephanie.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Jessica, we're at that fifteen minutes, but there is another session after we get through. This will go pretty quickly. Thanks. Okay, getting on to regular business. Clerk, could you report on the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Calendar year ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
移到
Okay. Any public hearing? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing on the 2018 budget, I have a few things I'd like to give everyone a heads up about, and then I'm going to ask for Council President George to fill in some of the pieces at the end. Basically, we've identified an issue with the water sewer utility billing, and anticipated revenues were not achieved in 2017. Highland Park's water rates were not increased in seven years despite the fact that costs have gone up. In fact, our cost of buying water, the rates we pay to Middlesex Water Company, have increased four times since the last rate increase, and none of those increases were passed on to residents or businesses in town. Additionally, New Jersey mandates that Highland Park purchase a minimum quantity of water, even if that water does not get used. These minimum requirements have increased, so we are forced to buy more water than we are going to use. On top of all of this, the Middlesex County Utility Authority has increased the rates for processing our sewage. And finally, due to infrastructure deficiencies, we anticipate possible inflow and infiltration problems. With all of that, I'm dismayed to say that these items did not come to our attention until they were uncovered by our Borough Administrator. I do not ever want to see the borough in the position of discovering any unanticipated shortfalls again. I have asked for swift action to prevent this from ever happening again. As for one quick fix, I have called for a quarterly review of our progress against our budgets beginning this year, all on all line items. I have also asked Council President Phil George to work with the Borough Administrator in fixing the infrastructure issues associated with our water and sewage systems. Councilman George, do you want to talk to some of those things?
I will, thank you, Mayor. We actually began to realize that there were some problems with billing in connection with another area. We began meeting with Middlesex Water Company about eighteen months ago on infrastructure problems. Everyone is familiar with the fact that it seemed like every weekend we had another water main break. That's because our water, our water and sewer mains are by and large one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty years old. During the process of this, especially in the last eight months or so, the Borough Administrator and I were reviewing a lot of these problems in connection with some more state programs, which I'll talk about in just an instant, and that's when we began to realize, in actual discussions with Middlesex Water, that we, in essence, since there had not been increases that matched Middlesex's rate, we'd essentially been, been... rate, we'd essentially been, um, been supporting a lot of the water bills for the last seven years, and that's why we have to have some increases and we have to have, uh, some surcharges to make up for the excess. So part of the problem was the age of the system, but Middlesex Water, which was a shock to us at their headquarters, told us, "We lose probably approximately 30 to 34% of our water, uh, to two things. One is uncollected revenue," and that brings up, uh, something that I've been pushing very strongly along with the administrator for the last six months. And the other is actual loss of water. It comes into our system and we pay for it. It goes out of our system and it never gets recaptured in, in rate increases, uh, and this is a problem of leakage. The other problem is revenue loss. We have a lot of meters that are dated. We know that a lot of these meters are not accurate. Uh, we know that a lot of larger meters are actually not, uh, owned by us and are probably not accurately reporting, and we have steps that we can do without extra cost, uh, to find them out, to prioritize these meters and replacements. Uh, we, so what we did was, we now have a running dialogue with Middlesex Water, either I or the administrator or both meet with, meet with them on at least a bimonthly basis to discuss a lot of issues, including rates, and what we anticipate in one, three, and five years. In addition, uh, we've addressed a number of areas of potential partnership with Middlesex Water, uh, with them taking the lead, um, in their area of expertise, especially with our larger commercial mains. Um, we're borrowing equipment for meter testing, which uses ultrasound basis, to actually measure larger meters to determine whether in fact they're reading correctly. They're lending them to us so that there's no cost to that. A big thing, and a third problem that we have, is something that the state foisted off on all municipalities and counties, and it's called the, uh, Water Quality Assessment Act. We are required to come up now with a plan, uh, called an asset management plan, to show how we're going to take care of our water infrastructure, um, and the cost to do that is rather high. Now, it will stand for five years, but we still have to do it, we have to do it this year. So we are working in partnership, and a lot of the equipment that we're borrowing, um, and the potential for getting a full-time or part-time, uh, Middlesex Water employee to actually work in Highland Park on this project, uh, is something that we have under discussion. Um, to accomplish a lot of these problems, uh, to conquer a lot of these problems, to be frank, because they, they really have to be attacked, and they have to be attacked now, and very aggressively. Um, there is a new program, which is actually the revitalization of an older program, for the Environmental Infrastructure Grant Program. It's now called the Infrastructure Bank. It is, um, I've been around long enough to actually fund itself, it no longer takes taxpayer money, it's funded by payment back on bonds and grants, uh, from municipalities. We are submitting within the next week our grant, which has been prepared, uh, to this program for, uh, to cover the cost of this. In essence, it could, it, it, it becomes like a bond once it's done, so we would pay it off as a bond, uh, to, to be able to accomplish all this and not take a major hit to the taxpayer, uh, to do the things that we have to do. So, part of the, uh, part of my program that I'm working with the administrator on is also, uh, we never had a capital fund built into our water bills to build up a nest egg, uh, or a capital fund, to look at repairs, to look at, um, uh, these cases where we may have a rate shortage that we could cover out of a capital fund. And then finally, I'll be working also with Councilwoman Wolkovich, as well as the administrator, uh, to look long-term at our zoning ordinance, uh, for new construction and, and reconstruction, as well as our redevelopment ordinance, to determine where we need to build in, um, concern for water and sewer infrastructure. There is none right now. We're relying on putting up large buildings with lots of units, on water mains that were built for mom and pop shops along Raritan Avenue in 1910, and that's not going to work, and we're going to run into significant problems once the developers realize, uh, that those systems are antiquated. We will have them ready for when they come, but it's going to take work to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, tonight we are required, uh, at this council meeting to have an open public discussion about the, uh, budget that was introduced on 3/20, um, and that's what we're about to, uh, I'm about to ask for a motion on. However, I do want to let you know that we anticipate some amendments to that budget at our next council meeting, which is on the 24th, I believe.
That's correct. There's a special meeting, uh, of the Borough Council with regard to the budget that's on for next Tuesday at 7:00.
Okay. So, Clerk, would you report on advertising the public hearing on the 2018 budget?
The 2018 Highland Park Municipal Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on March 20th, 2018. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on March 28th, 2018, with the public hearing scheduled for, for tonight's meeting, April 17th, 2018. Copies of the budget were made available to public in Borough Hall and the Highland Park Public Library.
Motion to, uh, open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising an ordinance to amend the Historical Commission Ordinance for Consideration of Passage on Final Reading by Title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, amending the Historical Commission Ordinance, Article 4 of Chapter 9 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any public hearing? All right. Um, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to thank Councilwoman, uh, Kim Cho Han for the work she put into redoing it. The Historical Society is now becoming, once again, the Historical Commission, uh, and when there's a revitalized interest in, uh, in it, and I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I third this, uh, this, this, because it's, I, I think that this commission is immensely important, um, and I know that, uh, we've gotten a lot of resident interest, uh, and volunteers, there's a lot of energy over there, and I think their, their scope really knows no bounds, so it's really exciting, uh, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I'd just like to say one more thing on it, um, also, although I did report on some saved dates, the Historic Society Soon-Bee Commission is, um, very active, they're willing to dive in. Our, um, chair actually works for the New Jersey Historic Grant Commission Trust, um, so she has access to grants for programming, um, therefore, we can provide awesome programming to our residents, and, um, it really doesn't have to come out of the municipal budget. Um, so I look forward to meeting you guys and, um, getting our programs up and running, and yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Thank you, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, and yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising an ordinance to amend the Administration of Government Ordinance for Consideration of Passage on Final Reading by Title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 3, Administration of Government, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Okay. Uh, may I have a motion for a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Clerk, could you report on introduction of an ordinance to amend the amusement and entertainment ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning hours of operation for amusement games, has been introduced and writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I'd just like to say sorry's me tonight. Um, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Wolkovich for, um, working on this ordinance and amending it. Um, you look at so many other surrounding towns, like Edison, who has Top Golf, and Woodbridge, who has Dave and Buster's, and Somerville, who has Yestercade's, and, you know, there's so many opportunities. This, uh, type of business is, uh, you know, attractive now, especially for young people, to medium-aged people, uh, old people, young people, everybody, um, so I'm really hoping that, uh, we can see, uh, an amusement business, uh, in our downtown and have some, have some fun after we go and eat at many of the restaurants on our main street, so yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Stephanie likes to entertain. Um, yes.
Forty-one-year-old, like a woman, too.
Oh, yes, she likes to have fun.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriation?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Councilman Hirsch, sorry.
No, no, Wolkovich, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt, uh, the Consent Agenda Items Number 16 through 26?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Uh, I'd just like everybody to notice that the first item on the consent agenda is the purchase of a number of water meters, of new water meters, to replace water meters that we know aren't working. We've already started the program that I spoke about before. Uh, I vote yes, with the exception of 21, I abstain on 21.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Okay. I am appointing the following to serve as professionals for 2018. Special Counsel Joseph Baumann, uh, may I have a motion to confirm?
So, motion to confirm?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Okay, I'm opening up the floor for public discussion now.
My name is Jessica Hinston, and I'm at 304 Montgomery Street. I, I was hoping to have more of a statement from you, um, Mayor, about the Committee of Understanding, and just so that we could have a little bit better understanding here of what happened in the, in the meeting, and so I was specifically interested in what were some of the action items that came out of it, and what were some of, um, I mean, this is related, but concrete steps that were taken, that were made, um, or were intended, you intend to make, as well as some of the, if you could summarize some of the main themes that were discussed, or main topics that were discussed.
Sure, thank you, Jessica. Um, so, um, there was a lot of discussion about the, um, history of different, um, things in Highland Park regarding, um, racism historically. Um, we also talked about, uh, for instance, um, Jessica, Dan, um, had presented some of the, uh, numbers that he found. Um, just for those of you who don't know, um, Jessica, I don't remember if it's you or Dan, had requested from the Police Department a listing of, um, stops for traffic violations, and, um, um, they took a look at them, and, um, there was discussion about those statistics, um, and, uh, one of the things that, um, I guess it was Sergeant Curbelo, who is the sergeant that actually collects the information, um, that, uh, he mentioned was that right now, that data is used in the review process of different officers. Um, one of the things that became clear to me was that, um, I, we need to look at that data and, and analyze it and see what's going on with it. Um, I know you and I are going to be getting together, finally got a calendar date that worked, um, to talk about those things, um, and, um, see where we go from there. Um, we did talk about, um, um, bias that everyone has, whether they realize they have it or don't have it, um, that we are all biased to some degree. Um, we talked about, you know, the, the world as it currently exists, and Highland Park not being a bubble, and that that world does come into our community. Um, there were questions asked about the incident that sparked all of this, um, which Officer Sergeant Curbelo said, mentioned, you know, he couldn't get into some of the details, 'cause it's an ongoing investigation. We did talk about, perhaps, waiting for our next meeting so that we could answer some of the questions that came up about that. Um, and I'm gonna ask Matt and Elsie if they recall anything else that I'm not remembering.
We talked about, um, going forward, uh, about the, once the investigation is over, that information being released, and people can, and we can openly discuss what happened then, once the investigation is over. We spoke about that. I also said that, um, we're gonna be interviewing a company, take a look at our Police Department and our Borough, and look at standard operating practices, a, a review, um, of practices, policies, and have some community input on that. Once we get the company on board, we have an interview scheduled, um, I think tomorrow, with some companies that we wanna take a look at, to take another look at us, such as we did back in the early 2000s, so that was another step that we said we're gonna do, and, um, I think those were the major ones that we talked about. Um, there was even talk like, um, you know, there was concerns about the number of calls that we receive, and who generates these phone calls, and, um, it was interesting the results of the, the calls that we received, because most of the calls are generated by our Highland Park people, um, and it was people, persons of color in their neighborhood. So, um, that part was, we discussed that, so we're gonna be taking a look at all of us, 'cause we, we, as it says, we all have implicit bias, and, um, we're gonna take another review of us and see where we are, and see how we can come together and try to address some of the issues that have, impact all of us.
I just, I, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Matt, I saw, should I keep going? Okay. I just have a couple of things that I wanna say about training, because that's come up several times about, and I'm really glad to hear that, like, we can all agree that everybody has implicit bias, our Police Department has implicit bias, we have implicit bias, and this is something that, like, we all need to work on, and I can't agree with you more that this is something that's not just happening in the Police Department, although it is happening in the Police Department, it's also a broader community pro, like...
That is very true.
And we absolutely need to address that in, in substantial, significant ways. But I just want to say, and I know that my time is limited, but I do wanna talk a little bit about the training, and I know it's come up, that the Police Department receives clear training, and so I did a little bit more research on this, of course I did, right? So, uh, so we were able to track down, uh, the instructor manuals on the Attorney General website, and from that, I was able to review the PowerPoint slides for the clear training. Obviously, PowerPoint slides don't necessarily give all of the details and the activities and discussions that are used in a training, but it does give you a sense of the topics that are discussed, the depth of the discussion, and the perspective taken on... that are discussed, the depth of the discussion and the perspective taken on those topics. So in the clear training that I reviewed, and maybe it's been updated, but there are over 100 slides. It's quite extensive. Seven of those slides are on implicit or unconscious bias. The slides are a brief introduction to the topic and list a few ways that it can affect officers. However, it does not appear to include specific ways to challenge bias in everyday work of policing. It doesn't appear that there are follow-up exercises, trainings and support for changing the work of policing based on racial bias. And as an educator whose field is professional development, I've worked in professional development for over fifteen years in schools and working alongside teachers, I absolutely know that a one-time, short-term training does not change everyday practice. My background has been in actually co-teaching and modeling lessons and over an extended period of time. And so I can't see any reason why that would be different for policing. A one-time training would not change practices. And so, for example, policing trainings could include simulations or cases to understand the way implicit bias affect policing. It should include long-term trainings to follow up with how police are addressing these biases. It should also include specific ways for individual police and the department as a collective to counter bias in everyday policing. And I don't see any of these, any evidence of this in the instructor manuals.
In the clear training, you're talking-
Yes, in the clear training. So I think it's something that we really need to have a broader discussion about and look into, you know, how is this clear training being followed up with an implementation plan in our police department? The seven slides were, like, explained implicit bias, but that's different, a different, it's an introduction is very different than working with it.
Right.
And so I just wanted to raise that as a concern.
That's a good concern and I appreciate that, Jessica. One of the things that we also talked about the other night, when we talk about training for the police, one of the things that we said we wanted to see was that it's not just once a year, that this is an ongoing training and it happens more than once a year in different areas. I'm not sure, but Chief, is it the clear training that we use or are we using? I know we brought in Noble to work with us at one-
Clear training is mandated by the Attorney General's Office.
Do you want to go to the mic, please? Thank you.
Good evening. The clear training is mandated by, as you know, by the Attorney General's Office and the curriculum is set by the Attorney General's Office. Every officer in the state of New Jersey is required to watch those slides, go to a class, I went myself. Do I think more can be done? There's always more could be done. I couldn't agree more. We, our officers have all received it. There is ongoing, each year they have to attend more classes for refreshing. So it is ongoing, but that doesn't, having said that, doesn't mean there can't be more. I think I've spoken to you and you had a contact for some implicit bias training, but I did look on, see how I receive educational materials usually from the AG's office, prosecutor's office, from many of the police academies, and they have different courses they offer. Some are free, some aren't. Some are applicable, some aren't. And you had mentioned, or Dan had mentioned, that he had someone. If you have someone, I'm all ears. We would be happy to do that. But we were looking on the DOJ website and always sees a clear training, which we're mandated to have and we do have.
And I understood that, but my point was just that ongoing is absolutely where changing practices is.
Right.
I understand that.
As long as you're doing-
Yeah, no, that's mandated. But in addition to that, and I think, again, I said it before, I said it again, I think we've been ahead of the curve by trying to get different groups and cultures in so we can learn about, in fact, we're working on now to get the seat culture in, to teach us about the seat community so we would understand that better. And I've already reviewed the many, probably over half a dozen, different nationalities, religions, et cetera, and we're open to any of it because I am a firm believer in training. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, can I just say one thing to Jessica? There's a community forum that's happening with the new Attorney General on June 14th and also with the Middlesex County Prosecutor Andrew Carey on June 14, 6:00 PM at the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office Training Center, North Perole Road in Edison, is behind Middlesex County College.
Yeah. And the other thing I was going to say is we do have a new Attorney General. And, you know, now is an opportunity for us to get on his radar in looking at these things. Hi.
Hi, my name is Sheila. I'm from 201 South Second.
I'm sorry, I missed your name?
Sheila Sekar. I'm here in regards to the issue that we brought up a few weeks ago regarding police, overpolicing. And in light of the ACLU's data, and I'm glad to hear that the police are using some of the data in their reviews, but I do have some questions, especially since Jessica, sorry, especially since-
Or take it off, whatever you're more comfortable.
Okay. Especially since Jessica and Dan provided so much information. And I wanted to know what kind of data is the police department using right now to be analyzed and how often for these reviews? Will it be shared with the public? What methods will you be using to identify racial patterns? Is it in comparison with racial demographics in Highland Park or within Middlesex County? If training on analysis of data is needed, who will provide it? And in light of the fact that we're using the, we're already using this data for the reviews, if there is, if there shows to be racial biased by any of the police officers in their reviews, what actions are taken going forward to kind of improve on that?
So I'm going to ask the Chief to talk to the last thing that you mentioned because he's responsible for the entire police department. And if, Chief, if you don't mind addressing what would happen if you saw that there was racial bias on the reports?
Yes. I think they're good questions. I hope I remember them all. We keep those statistics voluntarily. I think we're one of the few, if only in the county, to do that because, again, we believe they're a good tool to use.
Chief, can you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
We think they're a good tool to have and to use, okay, in case there's any issues that we could look back for. Are they reviewed periodically or they studied every day? No, we just don't have the staffing or time to do that, but I'm able to look back. Should we get any complaints or should we observe any patterns that we don't like? So we do look at them routine periodically. They were, one of the issues, and I think we're meeting with Jessica going forward, is the numbers that were produced were compared to the population of Highland Park. And I feel that that's probably not a good comparison because I think there was one study that we have, something like 15,000 cars go through our town each day. They go, Route 27 is a direct route to the county seat. So unless all those vehicles were Highland Park residents, you're not going to get a fair comparison. If you go 1.5 miles outside of our borders, you touch on Piscataway, Nebronza, Edison, the Somerset section of Franklin, and I don't know if I'm missing any others. And that would change the demographics tremendously. So, you know, numbers can be looked at, depends how they're compared, what they're compared to. We do keep those stats and I'm trying to remember some of your other questions so I can answer them.
So if we're not comparing it to the racial demographics in Highland Park, what are we comparing it to?
Well, I think at a minimum, the county and perhaps the state, because we get, again, with 15,000 cars-
Well, we-
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah.
I wasn't in on it. Twenty-five thousand cars. I think the majority of them are probably from, certainly out of Highland Park, some are even out of state.
But I will tell you also that, you know, we want to take a look at, I'm sorry, Chief, we want to take a look at those numbers and work with a professional who could guide us in terms of what we should be comparing them to or not comparing them to. You know, because, again, you know, there is the concern that, you know, we double in population twice a day on 27. So how do we know what the population, the demographics are of that 15 to 25,000 cars going back and forth twice a day in Highland Park? So that's, you know, we are, what I've asked that we look at, look for is someone who is a professional that can work with us in analyzing data, what is good data, what is bad data, how do we use it, and that sort of thing. But right now, the data we have is the only thing we can work with.
So on that vein, one of my questions is what data is, are we analyzing? Will it just be stops then or will it also-
No, no. It's, it stops, it summons is issued. Right now, it's pretty much 50/50. In fact, I think the, I don't have the stats in front of me, but they're pretty much 50/50 as far as who gets summonses. So we do have it broken down by stops and by summonses issued.
And how will this be shared with the public?
Well, it's openable. That's how Jessica got it. It's no secret, we're not hiding anything.
Thank you. You may not want to go too far. I keep calling you back up.
Hi, I'm Anna Haley. I'm at 135 North Fifth Avenue. Hi again, everybody. So probably, I mean, this is an ongoing process of discussion, obviously. I think those of us that did attend the Committee on Understanding were, in fact, really, definitely feel like there's a lot more work to be done, but felt a lot of appreciation for having it pulled together, for the conversation. That was, you know, difficult at times. I really appreciated that the police officers were there. They did not need to be. So that, you know, that was definitely noted. My short-term concern actually came just a minute, a few minutes ago when you mentioned the budget. When is the, the budget's not been passed yet. It's up for discussion? It's then going to be voted when?
Well, we, on April 24th, we're probably going to amend it, but Borough Administrator, you want to talk to it specifically?
Yes. Okay. So the two things that come to mind right now intersecting with this issue and the budget are, and I realize things can be said, it was a very intense meeting, two meetings ago, where the Chief noted, maybe this was misspeaking, that there was zero budget for training.
No, absolutely.
Okay, that's what you said, but that's been a-
It's just not true. I have a budget, I have a line item for budget. Perhaps it was misunderstood, but we have money appropriated.
So I think at this point, in terms of building community trust, as we try to figure out what's going on here, is making sure that training budget is pretty darn robust this year. This would not be a year to cut it and it probably, optics speaking, would be a darn good year to increase it a bit. I think that we need to consider training that is not where implicit bias, racial bias is a part of the training, but that it's a full-on focus. And it is conducted by folks who have nationwide experience in training on implicit racial bias with police. There are lots of gigs that do that now. The second thing that's budget-related, so I'm not going to address other stuff for now that's not, but tonight for budget-related considerations, is with any firm that's brought in to run the numbers, and this came up in the Committee on Understanding meeting, I would sincerely hope that it is a competitive bidding process, that it is transparent with the community, again, to have any trust in the results done. I mean, we're in, you know, granted, I'm biased, I'm a Rutgers professor. This is not my area in terms of analysis, but I do, you know, statistical analysis for a living. As I noted in the meeting, Rutgers Criminal Justice Department in Newark is one of the best in the country. So in my mind, there needs to be a reason why we wouldn't be working with one of their faculty research experts. Like, that to me is a default in our backyard. But I would certainly expect that whoever is brought in has demonstrable social science expertise in studying police and racial bias. If either of those things are not really clear, like, extensive experience, I don't think you want to get into that. I think it's not going to, it's going to be money not well spent.
Yeah. I think your point about Rutgers Criminal Justice Newark is a really good one. We talked a little about it that night.
And they may know, if not them, because, you know, we get busy, you know, doing stuff. It could be that they're, but they know of the leading firms, the leading places that-
Right. And we have been approached by, at least Rutgers, Newark and Piscataway, about policy labs and, you know, for grad students and things and-
Yeah, and grad, the grad students are okay, too, but I think here we do want to have some hands-on deck.
Right. And they're supervised, you know, that's the thing, yeah.
And then just the last thing is, so the ongoing process that really is, we have to figure out how to actually name this thing and be able to define it. The problem with the stats and having concerns about what we're dividing stops by is that we're taking a lot of attention on that, which is pushing away from being able to say what happened here. And I think, and I said at the last, you know, the Understanding meeting, the community needs to have that labeled. I think that to understand, we really, we have to label what happened to our neighbor and his family here and what's been happening to other residents in our community for years as racial bias. And then work on understanding the context in which that emerges, but it's got to be labeled. So thank you for your time again.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Julie Luck, 602 Mia Drive. I kind of want to piggyback off of what Anna had said and what the Mayor had mentioned and what Councilwoman Foster-Dublin mentioned.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. With regards to the companies that you're interviewing tomorrow, are you able to share which ones you will be interviewing?
Tomorrow morning at, we have a Jersey professional management company that we're going to be interviewing.
Okay, you had mentioned them at the Committee of Understanding and I actually checked out their website and I called them and spoke to their receptionist. There's no mention of police bias on their site. And when I spoke with the receptionist, she mentioned that they do check out municipal governments and they look at parts of the government, including police departments, looking for best practices, but they're really focusing on efficiencies and redundancies. So speaking to what Anna had mentioned, I don't know if, let me backtrack, what makes, why are they being considered? If that's not the specialty.
If they're not the only one that we're looking at, that's the first group of-
No, no, I understand, but why them?
Because they have had, compared to the report that we did in the early 2000s, we got someone that had, was former police chief, worked in the AG's office. These are all retirees that they, we had to come in to take a look at us. And these are the retired, some of those retirees from police departments, police chief, AG's office that works with this firm, that can take a look at what it is that we need to look at in the PD world and then provide us the report and then have the community piece tied in.
But anyone specifically trained in-
That we'll find out tomorrow when we do the interview.
Okay. I guess that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Monique Coleman, 407 Lincoln Avenue. And I also was at the Committee of Understanding meeting. I appreciate, as Anna and others have said, the opportunity to get together as we did. And it was a very intense at moments discussion, but two things I just wanted to follow up on that I was encouraged to hear, and one, I know you already mentioned doing the audit, a full comprehensive audit. And the second point was the Human Relations Commission or Committee being somewhat ramped up, for lack of a better word, but somehow restoring, I think, some of the initial initiatives and directives that I believe the HRC was designed to incorporate into their role. So I guess what I'm trying to ask now is what are the plans between now and the point when this process actually begins in terms of the audit? You know, what can be done to show the community that this, you know, we are working on addressing the community's concerns with regards to, you know, bias, not only our policing, but in our community at large? You know, because, again, I understand institutional processes like this take time, but I'm just concerned about what happens in the meantime. And if you could speak a little bit more here publicly about the HR, what the plan is? I know you're still working it out, but if you could talk to that a little bit.
So Matt and I have not had much time to talk since then, but I will tell you that it's my understanding that the HRC used to be the Human Rights Commission. And that says something different from Human Relations Commission to me. And we may want to take a look at even what we call the group. So, yes, I know it's a real process, you know, one of my, the most frustrating things to me in trying to get anything done is how long it takes here. But, you know, I want you to know that this is really number one on- But, you know, I want you to know that this is really number one on my radar right now. And there's a whole re, training of the, whatever it's called, human, HRC I'll call it, that's going to have to take place. Matt also asked for more volunteers on that committee. Right now, I don't know how many openings you have.
Five.
Thank you. And, you know, we need to get, we need to get a hold of that commission. They're doing some really great things, your book program, for instance, is fabulous. And there's more that needs to be done, but, you know, we need to, we need to get a hold of that group and really identify what their real mission is here in Highland Park. I want to get the old, Joan, you can help me with this, the old information on what the Human Rights Commission was all about. And that might be a great place for us to start.
Right, I guess because part of the discussion was about the old commission report, that task force report that was generated and how one of the recommendations was for the Civilian Complete Review Board and how the HRC was somewhat tasked with that responsibility, but not formally. So I guess what are we, what are we saying now to the community who, when residents have, you know, complaints they may not want to take to the PD? Is it HRC in a way?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, so.
No.
So we don't have any.
Declaratively, no. If you have a complaint about the police, the Human Relations Commission right now is not where you want to take that concern. We're not equipped for that, so absolutely no.
So right now, there's really nothing established at this point?
Not locally.
Okay, thank you.
But let me add, if you do have a complaint about the Police Department, you can send, you can go to the website or you can send us as council members concerns that you may have. So there's not like, there's no place for you to go. Feel free to send me any information that you may have, any concerns that you may have, you can send that to me as Chair of Public Safety.
And I just want to say, this is not even me personally that I.
No, 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 when I said you, I meant general you.
Right, for the community, thank you.
Yeah, I meant the entire community.
Can I, can I just, and you can, you can go to the county, you can go to the AG office if you feel we're sugarcoating something, you can, you can, that's your right.
Mayor, might I add that 10 minutes after the meeting, two meetings ago, if you recall, my addressing implicit bias, I did supply the township with, I'm sorry, the borough with a list of all of the sources in the county and the state, both official and also sponsored by the Bar Association for contacts, for complaints, and requested that they be posted online so that IT, Monica's back, should be able to get those up or at least be able to circulate where you can find them.
Right, but for local help, I mean, to here in Highland Park, we have to get the human, the HRC back in operation for that.
And in the interim, please feel free to reach out to me at fosterdublinhp@gmail.
Tina Weiss House, 143 North Fifth Avenue. Just as a historical point, it is a very interesting thing how the Human Rights Committee Commission became the Human Relations Commission. And I didn't, I mean, I see on the task force that in 2002, it was still the Human Rights Commission, but I think it was changed very soon after that. And my own feeling was that it was changed to deactivate it because the Human Rights Commission was a more activist commission that did take up issues of racial profiling in town. And I don't know how it was constituted, but I do know that after the fact, it became the Human Relations Commission, and it did none of that. It was, it was a conscious change, and I believe it happened under Mayor Frank. But, so when you go back and look at the change in the charters, I think that will add to the historical record that we're going to now incorporate into the history of the town. The other comment, so I think that's really important, I'm glad it's getting raised here. The other thing is that I agree that if we're going to hire, you know, some specialists to help us analyze the data, that it be to the satisfaction of the community that is raising issues on looking at specifically racial profiling in police departments and that we not spend our money foolishly and then have to go back and spend more money. So I'm very happy that these issues are coming up now as we begin to interview different companies that will help us.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Mayor, can I add something while Mrs. Picard is on her way?
Absolutely.
After the report was done in 2002, we had an opportunity based on the punch list that we had to work with. And we had an opportunity as the Human Relations Commission, which was very robust at the time, we even had alternate members. So we had more than enough members involved and we had people that served in an alternate membership position. And at that time, as we were having these various community groups such as South Side Pride, Bridge Builders, you name it, we had at least five or probably up to eight different community groups working together in tandem. Then decision was made that we should take a look at ourselves and say, we are, we have all of this that we think that are our rights. How do we communicate and continue to have effective communication going on? And that's when it was brought about, that we make the change to human relation because we need to find a way how to relate to each other, we need to have, to keep those lines of communication open, and we were working really hard and making those communication work and implementing the policies that was put in place by the commission and working together, so that's why the name was changed. If there needs to be a revisit, then.
And was the charter changed at the same time?
Yeah.
Did it get a different charter or did it change the name?
I'm not 100% sure on the charter, but we'll definitely look into that.
Mrs. Picard, please state your name and address.
Ms. Picard, 307 Magnolia. My first comment is to this lady who was speaking about plastic bags. The way to solve that problem is to charge for the plastic bags and give free to the people that bring their own or bring fabric bags. That's the way it used to be about 35 years ago when my daughter lived in Iowa or one of those places, and nobody used plastic. Now, I have pockets, I have four pockets in my jacket, and whatever fits in my pockets goes. I don't take plastic, I hate it. I'm concerned about the living conditions in the borough, not the people. The sidewalk repairs. On my street, they're fairly good, but once I walk around the corner to go to the supermarket, I have to be very careful. Today I fell on Raritan Avenue because I knew there was a raised, you know what I mean.
Where was it?
On Raritan between Fourth and Fifth. I was walking towards the synagogue.
Okay.
And luckily, there was a young man that I've known for a long time pulling the weeds around the tree, and he was able to come and help me get up on my feet. It didn't break anything, so. But overall, crosswalks, you know that Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue, they paved them up until the cross streets, and then it's all broken up. And if you have to walk across, tough luck if you don't make it well. And then the other issue is the sidewalk, the, rather, the garbage collection. For some of the men who do pick up the garbage, they think once the receptacle is empty, if you're lucky, it lands on your curb, on your sidewalk, and if you're not lucky, it lies in the street. This week, this past week, I actually called the boss because one of my containers disappeared. It ended up two houses down the street. And they were strewn all over the street. I would like to suggest an alternative.
You want to talk to?
To get us all carts on wheels. Or at least have somebody sell them. For me to go to any one of the hardware stores or, maybe I was going to say, where they sell them, it's a problem. And I don't have any immediate family, and the people who drive are getting old like me, and I don't want to get in the car with them anymore. So maybe that could be something that you would take up in discussion.
Mayor, if I may, Ms. Picard, as you know, I meet with DPW at least every other Friday between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning when they come in, and we discuss these problems. And I've mentioned the crosswalk at Magnolia and Third, which is just old subsiding excavation as well as some of the new ones. You have to understand, for whatever the reason, the powers that be scheduled a late winter, and unfortunately, our pothole program has been a little delayed because we've had cleanups, not only of the snow, but of the damage to the trees that the snow caused. So as I said earlier tonight, we are a little bit delayed in addressing repairs and cleanups in a way that we have to prioritize them. With regard to the cans, mines sometimes land sometimes at the corner of South Second and Johnson, and sometimes a little bit further down. But understand too, that sometimes when the cans are empty and they're laid down on the curb, a lot of times the winds, especially this week, the winds pick them up and they'll drive them down the street. You talked about cans with wheels, I know it's difficult for you to get them. As we move forward with our one-armed, one-man machines, we are replacing those cans that come with that, so that's an ongoing project. We actually have to do the counts on the latest batch for the new truck that will be coming in to expand that program. It does take time, we can't do the entire town all at once. The routes have to be carefully plotted out to make sure the truck can actually access that area, but we do work on that, we are, you know, we do replace them, and we'll keep you posted when, because the route is going to cover some of the south side, the new route for the new truck, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Picard. Jessica, did you want to come up?
I just have one last really quick question. Elsie, you mentioned that tomorrow you were interviewing, is that part of the Public Safety Committee meeting? No, so it's not a, okay, thank you.
Okay. I know I have an agenda here. Yeah. May I have a motion to adjourn to our conference meeting?
So move.
Okay, thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.